That was approved and developed, I'm sorry, developed by the search committee and approved by this board. The position criteria, CV and bio have been provided to you and is available publicly on the presidential search website. After the chair asked these preliminary questions, I will open up the floor for this body to ask additional questions. Each trustee, including the chair, will be afforded the opportunity to ask one question. Time permitting, additional questions may be asked by trustees, followed by a closing statement from the finalist. For those in the audience, thank you so much for joining us today and we are ready to begin. Welcome, Dr. Palm. The floor is yours.
Thank you Chair Harper. First of all, I want to thank the board of trustees for the opportunity to talk about the next chapter in Florida A and U University's rich history. It's truly an honor to be in front of you and talking about where we head next. The other thing is I want to congratulate the board of trustees, knowing that we are the number one public HBCU for six years in a row. That's truly because of your leadership. We also are number 20 when we talk about social mobility. That really is a testament of fam you and how we take students from a space where they enter to where they end up in their trajectory with changing generations to come. The other thing is that we know that we are in the state of Florida, the S U S system. And for nine years in a row, state of Florida S U S system has been the number one state for higher education. The Florida A and U University plays a very, very important part of with regards to where they, where we are with that. We also know that Florida A and University is an institution of academic excellence. It transforms students who graduate and then they go and shape industries, they shape communities as well, they shape the world. Florida A and University has had a rich history of cultivating a legacy of trailblading, trailblazers, whether it's in business, whether it's in allied health sciences, whether it's in engineering or education, humanities or the arts. And we know that you can get anywhere from Florida A and M University. So who am I and what drives me? I am truly driven by a relentless pursuit of innovation, excellence and impact. That drive is fueled by my passion as well as my purpose. My purpose is to create an environment that transforms lives of students through education. That's it. Every day I wake up, I want to make sure that I'm creating an environment that's going to transform our lives of our students through education. And that's why I stand before you today as the next president of Florida A and M University. So what is in fam use next chapter? We're going to position fam you as a top tier public institution, a national model of excellence, innovation and opportunity. You know, when we broke the top 100, I'll go on record to say I was the first to say that we're going to break the top 50. And I believe that we are close to doing that. In doing that, we're going to be bold, we're going to be aggressive, we're going to be intentional and we're going to be unapologetic. No longer will we chase benchmarks, we'll set benchmarks. No longer will we position ourselves to compete, we'll dominate. So moving forward, I would ever tell you next slide please, I have a roadmap to get us there. It's an ecosystem of excellence. When I returned back from Virginia State University, and I can tell you me leaving Florida A and University the first time was the best thing that ever happened to me. Going to Virginia State University and having the impact I had at Virginia State University and bringing that skillset and leadership back. I saw things very quickly that could really take fam you to the next level. What I saw were silos and also saw there was inefficiency within our operations. And I started to work as soon as I returned back. But what I would tell you is that we have to cultivate an ecosystem of excellence where student success, academics, research, athletics, we're all connected as one. Right now, I have to say we have to do a little bit better because we're in silos. It impacts everything that we do as well as the operational efficiency, impacts customer service. It impacts everything that we do. And so we have to do a better job. We also have to understand what happens in student success impacts athletics. What happens in academics impacts student success. We have to make sure that we are creating this ecosystem of excellence. We have to deliver on it. When we talk about student success, academics and research, I've had the great opportunity of serving at Virginia State University as not only the provost, but also served as a VP for Student Affairs. And I know what student success looks like. I also served there as the VP for Research. Maybe I have a problem saying no, but it truly can say that that experience has taken me to another level and I'm able to come back to Florida A and University and have instant impact. And you'll see those amount of talking about some of the data as we move forward. So as we move forward, this ecosystem of excellence has to take into consideration of alumni, community engagement, fundraising, and we also have to take care of our baby rattlers and family DRS. They have to be part of that ecosystem. And some people say, well, Dr. Palm, you should be able to hit the ground running because of some of your background. And I kind of beg to differ. I've already started. I've already started. So I'm, I'm actually in fifth gear by the time of the day I start as a president. Next slide. So when we talk about student success, I, I just want to tell you, we've had some record-setting student success metrics. We are at 41%, that's a 6% increase from where we were last year. That's the highest fam you has ever met with a four-year graduation rate. Our academic progress, 5% increase, we are 80, that's another record, 86%. Retention rate at 90% is a 3% increase. I can tell you, since I returned, we put some things in place that has really moved those numbers where we are today. And I'm really excited about it. But how do we move those numbers even more? What I would tell you is that technology is going to take us to the next level. And I know that because at Virginia State, we did the same thing. Record numbers of enrollment, record numbers of retention and record numbers of graduation rates. We have ordered EAB Navigate, which is Education Advisory Board Navigate and Edify. The way that we do it now with regards to this record-setting student success metrics, I have to tell you, it's a Herculean task. We are pulling data from different systems to track students. I know that we have wraparound services, but tracking students is how we get to these numbers. We have to know and we know that alumni have SOS Fund that helps save our students. But we know that tracking students that they may need another credit hour to go ahead and graduate. They may need to take a summer class to graduate. So this is how this ecosystem works. But what I would tell you is that we have staff that pull spreadsheets together with telephone numbers on them to call students, to track students down. That is not efficient and we have to do better. But I, that's the same thing we did at Virginia State until we got EAB Navigate. And we started moving numbers. Fam you is in a prime position to increase student success as we move forward. We also leverage other technologies such as Edunav, which is an academic planner, which is actually a roadmap for students to graduate. So I understand how to move the numbers. We can have all the wraparound services we want. We have to make sure that we are tracking students, contacting students and being very, very intentional about student success. Next slide. There's some opportunities here. Another record-setting PBF score of 83. Since the performance-based funding metrics came into existence, fam you has never had an 83. Since I returned, again, we put some things in place and we are seeing the results of some of the work that I have done. What I would say is there's opportunities and I, and I know trustee Washington in there here is saying, yeah, but some of those are excellence and some of those are improvements. The opportunity is to get to excellence and I'm committed to get to excellence. I see her shaking her head. And so for me, your opportunity is take these performance-based funding metrics and where we have improvement and move those to excellence and keep them in excellence. We want to get in the top tier of excellence when we talk about the performance-based funds. We do know that there's some opportunity coming with the S U S changing their strategic plan. And the fact that I have actually led and have been the architect of a strategic plan, I would say we need to start turning our strategic plan now because it's, it's really aligned with the S U S 30 to start talking about how do we now navigate our strategic plan to align with the S U S 30. So great, great opportunity. The other thing is we have an opportunity to increase enrollment and I'm thinking about 12,000 students. But that, that's over time. We talk about 12,000 students, we want to do it responsibly. We're doing a great job with student success. We want to make sure that every student that enters into the university has an opportunity to be successful with regards to graduating with a high-paying job or moving to graduate programs or professional schools. And so we want to be very, very strategic in moving the number up to about 12,000. That'll do a lot of good things for fam you. There's a number of ways we can do it from graduate students to transfer students to part-time students, to first-time in college students as well as online students. So I'm very excited about that. We also understand that programs and strategic emphasis, the PSEs are also part of the performance-based funding metrics. And we know that we have to be very strategic as we recruit students. And so now we are being very strategic recruiting students into those programs of strategic emphasis. Before we had somewhat of a shotgun approach, it was, it was good, but we have to, in order for fam you to compete, make sure that we are enrolling students in these programs of strategic emphasis. The other thing is engaging students. We know that, and when I served as the VP for Student Affairs, that student success just isn't grades. Student success actually is fueled by student belonging, student engagement. And so those student affairs play such an important role with regards to how students feel when they get to the university. Do students want to return? Are they connected? And so I'm really, really committed about, about being intentional about making those connections and working with our SGA and other entities with, with across the campus to make sure that our students are engaged. And the other thing that we have to talk about is these, the opportunity for students to graduate in high-paying jobs. And I can see an opportunity there when we have our industry cluster and corporate sponsors to really have mandatory internships as well as experiential experiences for our students, every student, in order to make sure that they are workforce-ready and they are ready to go on to the world. But again, record-setting PBF score, I can't thank the, the team enough. And it's truly, truly, truly a good day with regards to fam you. Next slide. Academic programs, of course, being a former provost, I understand the importance of academic programs. And we do have to develop a curriculum for the future in all areas. The provost has called together a task force with the faculty and the faculty center has one to talk about artificial intelligence and developing these curriculums that are going to impact our students for the future. We know that our students coming from high school are going to have these, these types of artificial intelligent backgrounds coming in and they're going to expect more. So our faculty have to be prepared to deliver in these particular programs and we have to embrace artificial intelligence. I also understand and not only the curriculum, I called two meetings so far, it's really developing fam use digital strategy and how we embrace artificial intelligence. We had consultants from Accenture and Microsoft talking to the whole campus with regards to in their individual divisions, not just academics. We're talking about finances, we're talking about procurement, we're talking about sponsor programs. How we leverage our artificial intelligence to break down these barriers as well as to increase productivity. And so we have some work to do with regards to that, but we have to embrace artificial intelligence as we move forward. And again, I think we have some other opportunities if we talk about online learning programs. At Virginia State University, we had zero programs. By the time I left, we had six online programs. Virginia State University is now R2 Carnegie Classification, R2 Research. I put in motion many of the components before I left to get to R2. I know how to get to R2 and I know how to get to R1. A lot of it is dealing with these graduate programs and they are doing a phenomenal job at Virginia State University. Next slide. Also, I don't want to talk, don't want to forget about our baby rattlers. We have to do a better job. And they have to be part of the ecosystem. We have a great, great opportunity with regards to engaging our faculty and students in all disciplines to be down there, service projects or even on, you know, with faculty, we have research service as well as teaching. They could take some of their service time and go down and work with our developmental research school, establish centers of excellence and STEM agriculture to create the pipeline for students to come to Florida A and University and those programs of strategic emphasis. Also, DRS student-paid research experience. I had two DRS students when I was teaching the College of Pharmacy, working in my, in my research lab. They are now MD PhDs. And you never know the impact that you have on a student and the work that you probably did, the foundation that you laying for them until you see them after they finish. And so it was really a touching experience when the gentleman walked in. In fact, he was awarded 40 under 40 two years ago with regards to fam use homecoming. And of course, we need to raise money for that, that particular fam development research school. So I'm excited about putting in a program in place, working with trustee Brown to move things forward. Next slide. But I can, what can I tell you? Our faculty is our most precious resource here at Florida A and University. I know because I'm a faculty member. We have to recruit, retain as well as develop world-class faculty. And so what I do know is we have a number of things in place to help with recruiting as well as help develop faculty. But there's a couple of things that I want to talk about. We want to, because we have to move to artificial intelligence and really embrace it. I want to really create a program of artificial intelligence and digital transformation faculty fellows where faculty can work with one another to really help move faculty to a different space. I know sometimes they have an embrace and sometimes they won't embrace, but we have to get them to a different space. The other thing is I want to take my time with this one is faculty thrive initiative. You know, when I left fam you the first time and I came back, I could tell that some of the faculty that were very, very active, very, very motivated. Turning back, I could see they lost their, their punch. And we have to put a program in place to make sure that we are really monitoring and managing faculty burnout. Teaching too many classes, too many students in the class. As the president, I will make sure that we are monitoring and managing those particular opportunities. But that's something I think is near and dear because faculty are our, our most precious resource. They fuel the institution and that we have to make sure that we are taking care of them. Next slide. Research and innovation and economic development. Well, here we go with another record. Record research productivity. I want to thank Dr. Weatherford. Research expenditures at 70 million, research awards at 112 million and indirect cost generation at 7 million. For those who really don't understand the language, let me tell you what productivity means. That research expenditure is an indication of productivity. The research expenditure of $70 million means that faculty are purchasing, they have students or other staff employed and they are producing, right? So the more productivity means that more grants, more money. And so I want to thank Dr. Weatherford, of course, with my strategic leadership, they have moved the needle to another record year. So I'm excited about that. And Dr. Weatherford, we're looking at 150 million. I'm going to go a little bold as I mentioned before, as well as intentional. That 150 million, of course, we have to do some things to get there. We have to make sure that the infrastructure is in place. We need to make sure that we have world-class talent. We need to make sure that we are truly, truly supporting our faculty to make that happen. Our one Carnegie Classification, we're close. We, of course, you need 70 graduate students, doctoral students to graduate. You only need $50 million in research awards. We're at 112. So you can see that there's a little balancing that we have to take care of. But we have to be very strategic on how we move forward to increasing our graduate students and their graduation. And I see it not only online, but actually support reallocating dollars to those areas to make that happen. Now, something very innovative is we are a land-grant institution, 1890 land-grant institution. But we have research, we have academics and we also have extension. What I would like to do and I'll bounce this off of Dean Wesson, I want to elevate our land-grant mission. I want the whole university to be a part of the land-grant mission. We do that by making CAFS, College of Agriculture and Food Science, an institute. By making it an institute, we have the opportunity from other disciplines in colleges and schools now to be a part of that institute. CAFS has a scope that of work that impacts Florida. By doing that, our other areas across campus can now be part of that institute and have an impact on the rural and urban areas within Florida. So now we're impacting Florida Floridians everywhere, right? We have the opportunity to make fam you and, and put them in a different space. We get about $50 million a year from USDA federal as well as a state match. University of Florida gets $400 million a year and they have an institute, right? So we want to make sure that we are leveraging our land-grant mission to have impact on Floridians across the state. Of course, we talked about world-class talent, incubators and accelerators. We have some talented faculty members. But we have a void and how do we take their inventions, their techniques to market, right? We have some that have patents, tech transfer. Well, and when I served as interim VP for Advancement, we had a great conversation with Eli Lilly. We bought high-powered scientists from Eli Lilly to meet with our science and our researchers. They were so impressed, not only that the fact that the the faculty members didn't have things all the way to product, but they were at a space with their techniques that Eli Lilly wanted to help those individuals to really accelerate and incubate their ideas. And so we're still working with Eli Lilly to take that off the ground. But what I realized is that not only Eli Lilly, there's other pharmaceutical companies that can help us get there. And so leveraging those relationships is going to be very important. And then the last thing is that we have launched our research foundation, which gives us a chance not only to garner grants, but also garner contracts for research and really grow some other opportunities for funding. Next slide. We also want to get creative and create centers and institutes. We have a world-class pharmacy program, allied health science and nursing. There's no reason for us not to have a health science center. Our students and, and professionals in health, healthcare work together. Why not start here on campus, having multidisciplinary types of programs working together? And also leveraging our health science center to go out into the community and have impact, working with TMH as well as FSU, working within the south side of Tallahassee to make sure that we are providing in the community the healthcare that's needed. Not only does it help our community, it helps our students with regards to training. We talked about the land-grant institute, this pharmaceutical engineering center. As I mentioned before, I started day one when I got back. First conversation I had with the dean of engineering was talking to him about a pharmaceutical engineering program. About two, three weeks later, he brought a few faculty members over to me and we had a conversation about pharmaceutical engineering. A new field, a new opportunity to impact economic growth in Florida. We combined our high-packed, impact researchers in pharmacy and engineering together and they started having workshops. I went to two or three of their workshops. They are now ready to submit an LBR to really stand up a center of pharmaceutical engineering. As a biomedical person, I'm seeing some of their slideshows and they have microbes delivering drugs to areas of interest. And you're talking about high power, we're going to partner with biotechs, other pharmaceutical companies to lift this center off the ground. We'll actually be able to prepare students in a new field that will be workforce-ready to move forward. Next slide. And of course, when I talk about dominate, we have to support our athletics. Again, we want, we have some great programs, talking to the VP, either we're going to commit or we're going to quit. And I'm competitive, we're committing, we're going to commit to the front porch of the university. And I tell people, we don't only have a front porch, we have a wraparound porch because we have the Marching 100. So we have to support athletics and we have to support the Marching 100 and build champions. Next slide. Alumni and community engagement, we have to have rattlers reconnect. We have to be intentional about reconnecting the rattlers with regards to alumni association. We have to be intentional about our community partners, moving our community partners into a different space. We have the opportunity also to expand lifelong learning here on campus. There's no reason why our community partners and even alumni can enhance their skills for the workforce here on campus. And so we want to make sure that we take advantage of that. And also want to work with our city and county to enhance some of the talent and gal opportunities we have here in the city of Tallahassee. Next slide. So key challenges and how we win. As I mentioned before, silos and operational efficiency. Next slide. So operational efficiency is a key challenge. But how we win? How do we win? We, we win with technology. We have embarked on a road to implement a new ERP system, Workday. And I can just tell you, we're going to launch our ERP system August 1st. It's been about a year, year and a half that we've been implementing. The staff has been working hard and it's been difficult. We've been working them very hard. This ERP implementation not only increases efficiency and I've seen some of the, some of the, some of the demonstrations, but also within four years, it'll save us about $4 million, right? And so we can then reinvest those into faculty or any other initiatives that we need to do. Artificial automation integration. As I mentioned before, we have to embrace that. We have to leverage it for efficiency. We've had two workshops thus far, university-wide, and we are making sure that we're going to embrace it. We're going to identify areas in which artificial intelligence can help. Resource optimization initiative, we are looking at, taking a deep dive, looking at the university structure. Does the university have the proper structure to deliver on, on with regards to our strategic plan and our goals and objectives? Organizing resources, financial, human, as well as technology, technology to see if we're using those things appropriately and identifying where there's opportunity to reallocate resources to, to actually achieve our goals and objectives, expanding shared services as well as creating an operational KPI dashboard. So we can measure how efficient that we are. Next slide. And so you asked the question, what uniquely prepares me for this position as of the next president of Florida A and M University? As you can see that I've had two tours here at Florida A and M University, but it's actually my experience. When we talk about recruiting world-class faculty, there was a gentleman that recruited me here as a world-class faculty, Dr. Humphries in 1995, and it changed my world. Somebody once told me, if you do the job in front of you and you do it well, opportunities will open up. And as you can see throughout my career as a faculty member, research service as well as teaching, multiple teaching awards, five PhDs that graduated, two students that graduated, some of them are working at R1 institutions. Service, served on the faculty center for 2006, for actually 16 years. And one of the things that, excuse me, 21 years, one of the things that impacted me most is that's where I cut my teeth in this administration, understanding how the administration worked with the faculty senate. In addition, when I went to the dark side, when I went to the administration, I had the opportunity to be on the collective bargaining team. And being a faculty member, I know what impacts faculty. So we had high DFWs, D-grade, F-grades, withdrawal grades in English as well as math. I was the one that worked with our collective bargaining committee to reduce the number of students in those classes so we can bring up those grades. And so I know what faculty go through. I know what it takes to do research well. I know what it takes to be an outstanding faculty member because it's in my blood. But what I would tell you is when I left to go to Virginia State, that transformed everything. If I can tell you that my acumen for leadership as well as for administration exponentially increased by going to Virginia State, it was a wonderful thing to do. That experience at Virginia State, it was challenging, decisions had to be made and we had to move the university forward. And I can honestly say that I left Virginia State University better than when I arrived. We tackled accreditation, we tackled, I was the architect of their strategic plan, developing the strategic plan. We tackled the compliance with regards to many other things. We also did the compensation study. I chaired and ran the compensation study at Virginia State successfully. We also did a climate study at Virginia State successfully. The, when we talk about student success, increase graduation rate, increase retention rate. And then we also increased and doubled the research productivity while they're serving as the VP for Research. And then I was happy to return. And returning back to fam you, I came back with a different lens. I saw where fam you can do better. I saw where there's opportunities for fam you to grow. And I started on day one. So some of the things that you're seeing, some of those results you're seeing were the things that I started on day one, returning back to Florida A and M University. I was asked to chair the search for the coach, which I enjoyed. Football coach, I don't know if you all remember that. But I was also asked to stand in as the interim VP for Advancement and executive director for the fam you foundation. It seems like I have a problem saying no, but what I would tell you that every experience I have has helped me grow. Serving as interim VP for Advancement Executive Director in eight months, those eight months, we actually were able to raise $12 million, just about $4 million off a record year when I stepped out in February. And so it gave me an opportunity to learn and appreciate everything that goes on in that advancement office. So you asked me, why am I uniquely qualified? I can let my experience speak for itself. I can let my experience speak for itself to be the next president of Florida A&amp;M University. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Palm. One more slide, okay.
And I'm so sorry. So we will not only embrace our motto of excellence with caring, but we will instill a culture where everyone cares to be excellent. We know that excellence with caring cannot happen unless you care to be excellent. And we will instill that culture in everyone to care to be excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. FAMU seeks a bold, innovative, inspirational, yes, okay. FAMU seeks a bold, innovative, inspirational and strategic visionary who will be an unwavering champion for students and the programs that have driven the institution's momentum. Tell us about a time when you developed a strategic vision to improve outcomes and performance for a large, complex organization. What challenges did you face? How did you overcome them and what was the outcome?
Thank you for that question. One of the things I would tell you, the experience at Virginia State University was very powerful. And when I returned back in 2023, and I think it was around homecoming, and I had, you know, students seemed to find me, again, I don't know what it is, but they seemed to find me and ask for help. And I never turned them away. But a student came to me and said that she was having problems with her financial aid. And I have to admit, I almost hit the ceiling. I was like, I arrived in 1995, left in 2016, it's 2023, we're having issues. And so I was really, really somewhat taken back. What I would tell you though, is that the way I solved problems when I had Virginia State was the way I started solving the problem here. This had to be that Thursday after homecoming, I called a big meeting. I know in order to solve problems, we had to have everybody around the room. I called everybody that part of student services and student success into the room. When I entered the room, I could look at body language that people didn't know why they were there. I could tell there was attitudes while they were there. And that I asked the question, is financial aid fixed? And everybody said, no. I said, okay. I asked them what the problem is and nobody could tell me what the problem is, right? So we started going around the room. We had the registers office, we had student, student, student accounts. We had advisors as we, as well as financial aid in that room. And people started pointing fingers about what was wrong. Then we went through a phase of what's your perception and what is the truth? After a series of meetings, we put everybody on trial with regards, what's the perception and what's the truth? And they had to defend the perception and as well as the truth. And what came out of that, well, first of all, we had about 50 people in the room. Many of them didn't know each other, right? And what came out of that was that there were processes in other people's department that impacted financial aid. Many people didn't know that, that they were holding something up that impacted financial, poor financial aid gets blamed for everything. And it really wasn't a financial aid problem. It was a process as well as a system problem. So we worked and we worked hard that fall semester, we met every Tuesday. And it became a ritual for us to meet this group together. And we had a good time, we were called the Rough Riders. And we, every Tuesday from three to five, we would meet and we would talk about problems, how we solve student problems. And then we came up with the solution that we needed to make sure that paperwork was processed on time. And we needed to change the culture, not only the culture of how we do things and the fact that we work together, but change the culture of being how students register as well as get housing. And so what we did was came up the plan to make sure that everybody knew their role. But we also came up the plan to make sure that students were registered before they go home. Many of the problems happened because students aren't registered before they go home. So we put a big push on making sure students are registered for their classes. So it means that the classes have to be offered for the fall before they go home. We also wanted to make sure that students, before they were allowed to get in student housing, that they were registered for classes. We found that that in itself, because we had a carrot in front of them, changed how students' behavior occurred. But it also forced us to have classes available as well as making sure that we were doing things this semester before they go home. So if you catch them before the semester they go home, you're able to determine what their needs are. They also have an opportunity to get their bill so they can save up over the summer in order to pay for the bill in the fall. By doing that, we decreased student receivables. We increased registration and retention. We also increased the capacity of housing at that time. And it was phenomenal, right? Because at that time, the year before that, they had students register in housing that would not return. It would block other students who wanted to get into housing to return. It created a big mess. And I think our student housing capacity hit 90, 96% or what have you. The numbers you're seeing today with the records regarding PBS, the student success metrics is because of those efforts. Because of those efforts, but it's also because of the skill set as well as the talent that I received at Virginia State to bring it back with a different lens. We're going to continue those efforts to make sure that, that we continue with student success. Now, how much did that cost? Zero, no money. And we moved those metrics and I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Leading a university requires a confident and perceptive administrator who can make difficult decisions and pursue strategic courses of action. Tell us about a challenge you faced, a risk you took, or a stance you made that was unpopular among different constituencies. Describe the situation, how you navigated through it, why you made the decisions you did, and the result.
Thank you for that question. I'm going to go back to Virginia State. One of the risky decisions we made at Virginia State was to shut down during COVID. But I'm not going to talk about shutting it down because it was the right decision to make. But it was, it was difficult to navigate through that time. The risky decision that we made was to return back, right? That was, you know, we had some anxiety about individuals who wanted to turn, return back. We had, you know, some folks have had lost their loved ones. Some folks on campus have passed away. And so it was hard for the campus community to understand why we were coming back. So what, what I did, as well as the administration, we partnered with the faculty senate and student government to talk about how do we roll back into a school year? And there's a lot of planning that was involved. It was risky because we still weren't out of COVID, but we knew that we needed to get back. We knew that if we didn't get back, that we weren't going to come back. And so what I would tell you is that that experience, working together, shared governance, to get us to where we needed to be. What I would tell you was that we created some incentives for faculty and students to come back. And we slowly rolled everybody back within the next month or so that we needed to. But we had, for that semester, every Wednesday, I believe it was chicken, fried chicken Wednesday as well there at Virginia State. It was free for faculty and students to eat. We actually allow parking to be free for faculty to come back. And so we also, again, make sure that we were protecting those individuals coming back as well. So it was risky, but it was truly due to shared governance that brought us back to where we needed to be.
Thank you. The ideal candidate must integrate with external constituents, inspire excellence, and bring exceptional experience and enthusiasm for leadership within the wall, within and beyond the walls of the institution to actively fundraise and promote the university externally. From your perspective, what are the pillars of the FAMU brand? And what will your elevator pitch be if you were pitching to a potential donor for a transformational gift? Encouraging a potential student or parent to choose FAMU? Or engage in an alumni or community member to increase their support for the university?
Thank you, thank you very much for that question. So when I talk about, when you think about the pillars of our brand and, you know, our brand is so strong. But you know, one of the questions I ask, what truly, what is truly our brand? For me, the brand is really the dynamic alums that we have that graduate from Florida A&amp;M University and set the world on fire. And so I always look at our brand as how do we produce those individuals? I mean, we are consistent in producing these graduates. And so I would probably break that down per, per group as an elevator speech. If I was looking at a potential student coming in with their parents, you know, I would let them know that you can get anywhere from FAMU. And I could point at our alums to show where they are across the world. And that education at FAMU will transform your life. If you take a look at our social mobility index of 20, that you're going to be transformed immediately when you arrive at FAMU and you graduate. If I take a look at a philanthropic donor or even alum donors that their gifts make a difference with regards to our students' success. Our students need the help to get to the finish line. But when they get to the finish line, it's a good investment because they go out and set the world on fire. And then if it was a, within the legislature or our government, of course, I would talk about the return on the investment. The fact that we produce, the fact that we are good fiduciaries of the funding that we get and that we have and can show the results that we can work with regards to the money that we get from the legislatures. So again, for me, it's the alums every time. I can point to them and show students and everyone that we get to, we can get anywhere from FAMU.
Thank you. Trustees, the floor is now open for questions. Trustee Bryant, you're recognized.
Good morning, Dr. Palm.
Good morning, trustee.
My question is, can you expound on key challenges that you've recognized within athletics? And what your pointed and strategic plan would be in addressing those issues?
Yeah, so in athletics, again, one of the things that we really have to address is when we talk about compliance as well as student athletic success, we have to have a more concerted effort. I chaired the athletic committee with regards to, we had a grant from NCAA with regards to how to make sure that we stay in compliance. They do need more personnel down there in order to enhance compliance and monitor compliance and advisement in those particular, other particular things as well. The other thing is that we have to do a better job with finance and athletics. We're kind of boxing a model, but we have to get out the box with regards to sponsorships and licensure to really have a bigger impact in really providing more funds to athletics in general. We have to have better facilities to recruit the top athletes around the league and around the world to come and compete. But believe it or not, we compete, but we're ready to dominate and we have to get there.
Trustee Brown, you're recognized.
Good morning.
Morning.
These are questions, one of them that was based on feedback from faculty and staff in a recent survey. One of our strategic priorities, number four, is establishing shared governance and inclusive feedback in alignment with the board of governors and board of trustees. The faculty senate president and general faculty were unaware of the AI initiatives being offered by the university until the appearance in the Tallahassee Democrat. After asking to have faculty senate designate on the committee, the university declined to accept representation from the faculty senate. And thus, the faculty senate created its own council. The faculty senate and body of faculty were also excluded from the university's compensation study. And similarly, were unaware of the university's plans to eliminate reimbursements for tuition until live at the board of trustees meeting. Simply put, we do not have a good model of shared governance and the faculty and staff feedback is being circumvented. The faculty senate faculty and staff support the university using the faculty senate feedback system to ensure input is garnered from all stakeholders based on the shared governance to address this issue. If elected as president, are you willing to have centralized communication with the faculty and staff in our feedback system? And will we return to having faculty senate representative slots on all university committees?
Thank you, trustee Brown. First of all, again, thank you for your representation as a faculty senate president. As I mentioned before, serving on the faculty senate for 21 years, I learned so much about shared governance. Let me tell you also a little story. When I went to Virginia State University, there was a sense of mistrust there at Virginia State University with regards to the faculty. And I had the opportunity as a provost to really bring the faculty together. One of the things that I would say, and I would talk about the bylaws and as well, as well as the model we have here at Florida A&amp;M University, maybe even offer some additional opportunities. But one of the things that I did at Virginia State, and let me even talk about the compensation study to show you how much I am in support of shared governance. When we did the compensation study and I spearheaded that, when we did the RFP, the faculty senate president was part of us developing the RFP. When we chose the firm, the faculty senate president was a part of choosing the firm. When we set the scope, the faculty senate president was part of setting the scope. When we presented the information to the faculty, the faculty senate president presented the information to the faculty. I am committed to shared governance and I would offer a different model. Every Tuesday from four o'clock to five or even six, I met with the faculty senate leadership. What that did, it created an environment that we didn't have to meet once a month to resolve problems. We met every week, weekly for those problems to be resolved. And so for me, I would even offer that model, meeting with the faculty senate leadership, once a meet, once a week with the president to resolve issues immediately. Why wait a month? There's an opportunity to fix them right then and there. So as a faculty member, faculty senate member for 21 years, I understand, and guess what? Including the faculty makes things a lot better. And I'm here to win, as you know, not to be right. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Palm.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. I, as you know, want to double click on student success. And so you mentioned implementing some things to improve our performance funding. Can you go a little bit deeper on that and describe a specific program or project that you developed to improve student success and graduation? And what the results have been?
Yeah, so I kind of mentioned with trustee Harper's, and that was a, that was a, that was a heavy lift. But I understand that process means everything. And also know that leveraging technology has a major impact. One of the things that I would say is that Virginia State, we, we developed our ACE, which is Academic Centers of Excellence, right? We put it up second floor to the library and we built it to increase student success. It was a centralized location. And we were able to not only leverage it as advisement but counseling, but also as a first-year experience course as well. So establishing that first-year experience course was very, very important. The other thing is that we also trained those first-year experience advisors to make sure that our students were getting what they needed. In that first-year experience course, I thought it was very nice. They had a passport where they had to be at certain, certain functions throughout the year, whether it was athletics or whether it was music functions or what have you, to make sure that those students were engaged. What we saw was an increase in retention, increase in persistence throughout those programs, but also reveal where some of the areas of concern would be to really go out and address. I can tell you again, change is difficult. When we set up that center, there was a pushback from the faculty that they felt that they were taking away their advisement with regards to, and that they didn't know how to advise. And so it took some time to get us to a good space to be successful. But if you want to talk about a program, it was that Academic Centers of Excellence.
Trustee Lawson, you're recognized.
Right, thank you, Chair Harper. Hi, good morning, Dr. Palm, and welcome to this process. As the institutions are becoming larger and more complex, having a solid leadership team is obviously key. If you could share with us your philosophy or your thought process around building that team? And then secondarily, your view on how you would work to really hold that team accountable for the objectives that you've set out?
Thank you, trustee Lawson. What I would tell you, which is very important, is that as a leader, you have to know what success looks like. You have to understand where you're going. And you also have to be able to establish a team. I was very fortunate in at Virginia State University to be able to establish the team. The president gave me a green light to go out and get the team that I needed to build. And so it's very important to make sure that you have the authority and you have the opportunity to go build the team that you know needs to get the job done. So that's very, very important. So not only did you get the team, it has to be the right fit. It also has, those individuals have to be hungry, right? They have to be hungry, right? That they can take your job. And I think those are the type of individuals, individuals that you have to be comfortable with. That they can take your job. And I think those are the type of individuals, individuals that you have to be comfortable with. To be be able to um hire and to build the team and understand what success is. Always talking about being intentional. Well, they have to be intentional about what the job is. I think the other thing is what I do know as far as accountability goes. Is that ninety percent of administrators' jobs is people. You're not doing a job yourself. It's people that you're managing. And you have to put clear goals and objectives in face. You have to align those goals and objectives with your goals and objectives. And also have some K P I's and match those. But I do know the, that with accountability, you have recognition and you have consequences. But if you don't have those different things in place with performance management to understand that you have to manage individuals. And if they, look, if they can't cut the mustard, then they don't need to be there. But at the end of the day, it's also your job and you're accountable for making sure that they have the tools they need to be successful. But also that they understand what it is to be successful. And there's opportunities for improvement, performance management improvement. But there's also, you have to know when to call it a day, that maybe they just don't have the bandwidth. And you know, there's a, there's a dignified way of doing that. But at the end of the day, you have to know what success looks like and you have to make sure that you go for it.
I want to build on that uh question by asking you to describe a scenario where you identified underperformance in a team or individual. What approach did you take to address the issue while maintaining morale and productivity and balancing achieving the organization's goals?
Thank you for that. I um. I, when I first arrived at Virginia State University, we had one year to do our self-study. And. To submit for reaccreditation. I arrived in August, it was due the fall or September within a year. And as much work that may or may not have been done, the individuals there were working. I realized that there was a disconnect. Uh, they were working in silos. Um, there wasn't really much feedback, uh, and it was hard to get information on where we stood. I also knew and the president made it clear that this is my, this is, I own this. And if I wanted to be a university president, we'll get through it, right? And so uh, I had to make some executive decisions. Uh, individuals still were able to participate, but they were no longer in charge. They provided input as needed. Uh, but also at the same time, had to do a search to get new individuals in. But I also leveraged my network to identify individuals to apply to the position. So as we know, sometimes H R doesn't work fast. I had a year to get this job done. Uh, we were able to uh bring that person on board by January. And we went to work, we went to work also during the fall. But we went to work, uh, we were, that document was ready two weeks early before we submitted. And in shared governance, we submitted that document, we put it out to the university uh community for them to come. Look at it, critique it, make sure that the information in it was correct. And it was truly as, as I mentioned before, because we, with the university community and 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 really going through that process, they all participated. We had everybody participating in that particular effort. And at the end of the day, um, we were re-accredited with no recommendations. Uh, we had just gotten off a sanction that summer before and we were applauded for the work that we put in at that particular time. So knowing where the bandwidth is, knowing to make the call, the call isn't hard. When you know the opportunity that exists and you know that it's your responsibility. So, yes.
Thank you. I want to ensure that trustees Gani, White, or Gibbons don't have any questions before other trustees are called.
Ma'am, she given you recognized.
I yield my time to the trustees and the train.
All right, trustee Brown.
This next question comes from one of our strategic goals for the university's faculty and staff that we put together. It is called equity and employment standards across S U S institutions. The question is, who are our peers? Famu recently completed a compensation study that excluded the majority of S U S schools. And had few programs that contained our professional programs at the university. Additionally, Famu D R S was excluded from the compensation study and still make less than their county peers. Even after they were raised to the twenty twenty state mandated salary of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. By this time, their county peers have passed fifty grand. If elected as president, what is your vision for benchmarking faculty and staff salaries to stay competitive with our other S U S peers? And county schools and lab schools across the state? Additionally, do you believe that the incoming president's salary should be benchmarked from the S U S schools recommended, recommended by the search process? Or by schools recently in the compensation study, which excluded most S U S peers and do not have the professional program offerings at our university?
Yeah, again, thank you for that question. And I think this goes back to my answer early on. Um, I think that. We have an opportunity when we talk about where, who the peers are. Um, what I would tell you, when I was at Virginia State, when I included the faculty at that particular time, at the true beginning, and we had that conversation. On where we're really trying to take the university, uh, it's important to have that input. Because then we get on the same page. We wouldn't be having this conversation right now, because then we would have talked through this whole thing with regards to compensation. And um, with regards to the um, the salaries or what have you. Because again, you can set this up any, any way you want and come to a solution and and a conclusion, because you have R one institutions, the same size. You have premier institutions that are included into this particular um. Uh, compensation, when we talk about S U S, we have, when we talk about premier institutions, they're getting twenty-five million dollars in addition a year to be be able to pay for salaries. I think again, though, we also have to understand what a compensation study is. Compensation study truly is a roadmap. On how you pay faculty at different levels and with different percentages. And I think it's important for us to understand if we did. The S U S, and I'm fine with the S U S, we also understand that there's another step. That comes after compensation study is funding the faculty to get to those spaces and places within the compensation study. So you can have a competence compensation study that includes five institutions within the uh S U S and other R O one institutions. And then we can bring the faculty salary up to be be competitive there. And then you can do another compensation study that'll get us to the S U S number with these premier institutions. But the question that you have, it starts in the beginning where if you have faculty at the table, you have a administrators at the table. We can have that discussion ahead of time before we get there. So yes, I think that S U S is a good um peers to compare ourselves with, if that's what we're trying to do. I wasn't here when the compensation study started, but if that's what we were trying to do, then yes, it's a good, it's a good opportunity. So I think, yes. Now, when we talk about the, the president's salary. Uh, what I would tell you is that uh comparing it against the. S U S is going to create a problem for Florida A and M University. It's going to create a problem because then we need to compare the provost salary, we need to compare all administrative salary against the S U S. Uh, I think that we have to be responsible how we move that forward. Uh, and so that's a decision on the Board of Trustees. That's not my decision. But again, I think that there's a way to get there and I think that fam you should not go broke with regards to a salary for our president. I think that we also have to understand that we have to be responsible for the rest of the university.
Trustee Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Harper. My second question. Apologies. So you mentioned a couple of initiatives that will require more funding. And so as you know, we are a public university and pretty heavily uh dependent upon securing state funding. Uh, my question is, what would be your plan for securing more funding for these initiatives? Um, and then can you describe some of your experience in securing external resources, specifically legislative appropriations? Um, but also including private or corporate fundraising?
Yeah, thank you, trustee Washington. No, I'll go back to some of the fundraising we did in Virginia, in Virginia, Virginia State. Uh, one of the things that. Is that you have to make the case, uh, and also have to build relationships. Uh, what we did, and I think we did. Fairly well at Virginia State on funding various programs was that the L B R was not done in a silo. Uh, we would go on a retreat along with our Board of Trustees and we would talk about those initiatives that we have and how we want to move forward. I think it's a great opportunity here because we have a lot of Board of Trustees who are connected with the legislatures and they can help us. We can have a workshop on how that works, but at the bottom, at the, at the, at the. End of the day. Relationships, first of all, count, but more importantly, it is making the case. Make the case, not only how it impacts university, student, the university, but also how it may impact the state of Florida. Uh, you have to be very convincing on going after those particular opportunities. Uh, I think also, and I can give you an example, we uh, we wanted to increase uh some more opportunities for our students at Virginia State. And we put forth a plan, we call it V C A, Virginia uh um college access network. And we were able to get state funding, re- reoccurring state funding. And basically, the V C A was to uh allow pale eligible students. To, within a thirty mile radius to have free tuition at Virginia State University. Um, because we were excess opportunities uh institution, uh, it increased the number of students and we were able to transform their lives as well to make sure that they were. Um, getting the education they need, but we made the case and it was successful. And to this day, they're still being funded by that particular network. As far as um, serving as the uh, the interim VP for advancement, we had some great opportunities to leverage corporate gifts. And most of those, uh, again, corporate gifts were cash. Um, but also we were um cultivating uh other gifts during that time that I was in the seat there. And again, what I do know is connecting with funders is so important, connect authentically. But those opportunities uh really makes a difference. Uh, had a great opportunity to work with uh Dr. Kenzie with regards to his last uh thing that we did for him uh up during. Um, the commencement, uh, and we know that Dr. Kenzie will continue to give to the university, even with the naming of the building. So there's opportunities, but I, I think as a president, you have to be authentic. You have to be intentional about making those relationships and you have to be aggressive. So. That's where that, thank you.
Trustee White, you're recognized.
Uh, good, good morning, Dr. Palm.
Good morning.
I have a two-pronged question. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I have a two-pronged question. My first question is in regards to um. Financial aid. It's the same question I asked yesterday. While things, while there has been some measures, um, I would say, and there was, there have been some improvements. We are still not, um, in my opinion, where we need to be to ensure that students are receiving their financial aid in a timely manner. Um, even as recently, um, I've been getting emails about eighteen ninety scholars as well as uh some of our grad students. Who are having issues. I'm not sure if it's a system problem or whatever it is. To me, when I look at financial aid as a student and as a recent student who graduated twelve years ago. Financial aid should be very similar to American Airlines. We can't say that eighty percent of the students got their funding and that we're good. Because if twenty percent of the planes were crashing, we all have an issue. So what are, what is the plan to make sure that we are first ensuring that financial aid next year or the next two years? Would be a priority and that, that we will not have these types of issues going forward. The second question is, I have been hearing a lot of different things about um. A I and it, it's a word that it's a phrase that's thrown around very loosely, I would say. Um, especially at Florida A and M, I've even gotten, um, I've even gotten uh communications that, you know, some professors aren't even letting certain students. Use chat G P T. And as a student coming out of uh S B I. When we were being taught Microsoft Access, other schools were being taught business intelligence tools. And such as Tableau and other things like that, other systems like that. What can fam you do to bridge that gap? Because if we do not, we will have others of university students who are coming out. Better understanding how to use these tools while we, while our, our students are being left behind with the uh, with the methods and tools that they're using. Thank you, Dr. Palm.
Uh, trustee White, thank you. As always, uh, your first question with financial aid, you're absolutely right. And again, one of the things that frustrates me the most is that students don't have their aid on time. Now, there's various reasons for that, but there's still no excuse. Uh, whether it's the student didn't fill out the paperwork or we, we dropped the ball. Uh, we need to tighten up those areas and as a president, uh, again, I will make it my number one priority. Um, with regards to understanding what's going on, but we have to fix it. And there's no reason um that we should be even dealing with students with eighteen nineties. There's, there's some things in place that, um, when I talk about silos, um. Trustee White, is that this is the way we've done it and this is the way we've always done it. That, that has to go away and it will go away. Uh, and so we have to make sure that we um have a system in place to take care, especially those eighteen ninety scholars. Um, but also any student, we know that financial aid is a part of student success. And if the students don't have their aid on time, uh, they uh again have problems. They, they need their aid to survive. And so uh, that's a, that's a really, really, uh. That is a really something that really, I can't even say the word. It really kind of stirs me in some kind of way, but that will be fixed as, as, as the president. Um, when we talk about artificial intelligence, um, one thing I would, I would tell you is that change is different and change, difficult and change is difficult for. Fam you. Uh, we have to transform fam you and we have to do it immediately. But what I would tell you is that change is di- difficult for faculty members. We have to bring the faculty together and get on the same page. And what I told the team and told when we had our digital workshop is that A I is not going to take anybody's job. But those who know A I will take your job. And we have to embrace it. Students coming out of high school are embracing it. And so our faculty have to get on board and I'm committed to work with the Faculty Senate to understand how we get there. Provide the tools and resources for our faculty to buy in. Um, but it is critical for not only our faculty, but our staff in every area of the university. To leverage A I to increase efficiency. And so I'm all in and it's important that we get everybody else on board. And I think as a president, you have to lead from the top.
Are there any additional questions from the board?
I have another on the lineup, but one else is in line.
I'm sorry? You have another one? Trustee Brown, you're recognized.
Um, the last question is called protection from harm in reasonable timing. Survey faculty were asked if a supervisor is under investigation for alleged wrongdoing towards an employee. The employee who filed the complaint should remain under their authority. The second one was that the majority of faculty and staff disagreed, followed by strongly disagree. Also, faculty would like to have accountability for supervisors who have been proven to have done wrong, rather than allowing them to stay in their administrative positions. Some investigations at fam you have taken more than nine hundred days to complete, which sends a message of a lack of accountability. As president, what are reasonable implementations that you could do to improve this concern? And to provide accountability for timely investigations without harming employees?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. One of the things that I will be committed to here at fam you is creating the environment of civility. Um, one of the things that I will not tolerate is um. Folks not treating each other well. Um, under the circumstances where you have a faculty or staff member being placed under a supervisor that is. Um, harassing them, I will not tolerate that. I would suggest, in my humble opinion, that maybe their supervisor supervised that person until the investigation is finished. Um, I also know that uh, we need to increase the timing of our investigations. Um, but one thing I will not tolerate is people being uncivil to each other. Um, will not tolerate it with employees being uncivil to their supervisors. Uh, there's no place for it. It's not the culture for it. We wouldn't tolerate it with our students. We wouldn't tolerate it with our children. And so for me, it's important as we move forward to create that. And train, you know, one of the things that, uh, again, trustee Lawson talked about, bu- building your team. Um, you have to know your team. If you, if you have somebody on your team is not treating people right, either you have to go or they have to go. But at the end of the day, I'll create a culture of civility here at fam you. There's no reason for anyone at all. There's no reason for anyone at all to treat someone bad as an adult, especially when people are here. There's ways to work around it. And so I am a person that, when we take a look at how we treat people, it means a lot to me. It, it hurts my heart to see people in pain. And good, bad, or indifferent, we, I want to rush and make sure we do something about it. But for me, as a president, I can't fix everything, but I can create that culture. And everybody who works under me will understand what that culture is.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one. Okay, trustee Lawson, followed by trustee Bryant.
Okay, thank you, Chair Harper. Hey, Dr. Palm, you know, all the part presidents have had a vision of where they wanted to see the institution. Dr. Humphreys was all about National Merit Scholars. Dr. Robinson was all about building the research enterprise. If you could, share with us your vision for the institution.
Yeah, so, no, what I see is, first of all, a great opportunity. And I, for me, is both, right? We, we want National Merit Scholars, but we also want to increase our footprint as far as research. For me, when I talk about a tier-one institution, we're doing everything well. And so, you know, you have to figure out where, you know, you want to place your priorities. But I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. When we look at, again, a high-powered research institution, a STEM, and creating those jobs and workforce for the state of Florida, it's imperative that we invest. But if we invest and we have those high-powered research initiatives, students are going to come. And we can go after those merit scholars. And so we can chew gum and walk at the same time. And when I talk about a tier-one institution, that's what I'm talking about. Let's go after those merit scholars, let's be intentional. And let's make sure that the students come having an experience that's going to not only impact them, but it'll go out and impact the state of Florida as well as the world. And so for me, I like Dr. Humphrey's style. He recruited me, when I got to Virginia State, I recruited faculty the same way he recruited me. I worked on them, I got them there and they are making a difference. And I would do the same thing here, not only with students, but with faculty to get us to where we need to be with a high-powered research.
Trustee Bryant, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to pivot over towards the Alumni Association. Can you expound more on one of your points about the lifelong learning? And then also, can you talk about any strategies you may have on bridging the relationship with alumni to encourage give back?
Yeah, so the lifelong learning, again, was it for the community as well as if alumni wanted to talk about? I want to set up some programs, some certificate programs, some badges with regards to the university. We have to be in the community where we can provide resources for those individuals in the community to enhance their work skills, right? Enhance their credentials to go out and get a better job. And so I want to create that environment and FAMU has to be inviting with that to make sure that happens. And we have some really good faculty members that can help lead, lead that as well. As far as alumni given, I think what we have to do, we have to excite the alumni. There are a lot of alumni and a lot of support, but we have to really be intentional about how we engage them. A lot of alumni want to be engaged, but we have to go after them. We have a great National Alumni Association. But, but again, there's more individuals that could be a part of that association, but we also have to make sure that they give. And we have to make the case, as the president, I would make sure that I visit every alumni chapter and make the case. Because it's so important when we talk about our students. And I can't say enough what this SOS Fund does for those students. And when we talk about student success, we may, again, have a student that needs one more credit to graduate, but they don't have the funding. That Save Our Student Fund helps, right? We may have a student that has a 1.9 at the end of the semester. And if, to get them retained and get them retained with an APR point for us, we may give them a class during the summer, but they don't have the money to take a class, but we can pay for their class now. So they come back to the university to retain and they have a 2.3, right? So we're being very strategic on how that happens. And for me, it's exciting, but the alumni are the solution.
Thank you. Trustee Gibbons, you're recognized.
Dr. Palm, thank you so much. Can you summarize very quickly, because I don't want to belabor the hour? Were you, what is the current financial health of Florida Agriculture and Mechanical University?
The current financial health is good, but what I would tell you, we have some opportunities when we talk about some of our operations, as well as our operation audit, again, has some concerns. The current financial health of Florida A&amp;M University is good.
Thank you so much. You may now make your closing statement, Dr. Palm.
Thank you. Again, trustees, it's been a great opportunity to be here. One thing I would tell you is that from the experiences that I've had, I've left some lasting impact in those particular areas at Virginia State. And since my return at Florida A&amp;M University, that I have had an opportunity to improve even Florida A&amp;M University since I returned. And through leadership and through having those impacts, I see myself as the president continuing to make those impacts, to be involved with being at the top-tier institution that we aspire to be. And so for that, I look forward to being the next president of Florida A&amp;M University. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks to everyone for your engagement today. There's a full day of activities to meet with various constituencies. For those in the audience and watching online, the schedule can be found at the Presidential Search website. In addition, on the website, you will find additional content, including each finalist's cover letter, application, and a link to the Board of Trustees interview replay. We also have a feedback form that we invite the community to complete for each finalist. Finally, the Board of Trustees will meet on Friday, May 16th, at 9:00 AM Eastern Standard Time to take up action items, including deliberations and voting on the president-elect. Thank you again and have a great day.